I'll order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on August 7th, 2020 through posting notification to the press in accordance with State Statute 19.84. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Kathy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries nine zero. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight Kathy Meyer is going to share the safety message and it'll sound vaguely familiar from last week's safety message. I thought it was very meaningful and I asked that she, Superintendent Popol and I asked that she give the message again this week. So Kathy, yours.
Thank you. So, wear a mask is my safety message. While new research on COVID-19 is coming out all the time, recent studies suggest that the virus is also carried through aerosol transmission. And that means that it is cast into the air by people talking, singing, or shouting, and hangs in the air where it's transferred to other people. So if you are at all capable, meaning that you are not in between two and five years old, do not have trouble breathing, are not unconscious, do not have a medical condition or intellectual or developmental disability, or a mental health condition or other sensitivities that prevent you from wearing a face covering, wear a mask to significantly reduce the risk of transmission. I know that masks are uncomfortable, but they are necessary to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. If you are a student or the parent of a student who has chosen in-person class instruction this year, please start getting used to wearing a mask now and wear it in accordance to the district's health departments and CDC's guidelines to protect yourself and your friends, family, and community members.
Thank you Kathy, and I know it works. My grandchildren are wearing masks every day. In fact, we have pictures of them at the Milwaukee County Zoo today, all masked up, wearing to go. So I think practice makes perfect, it certainly seems. We have several citizen comments this evening. We also received five email citizen comments. Do you have that list in front of you Deb, that you could share the names of the people, please?
I do. We received five citizen comments virtually, from Nick Perkapile, Joanne Corey, David Holmquist, Kathy Leibfried, and Robert Shradley.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So first, we will have Crystal Callison come in, please. Hi, Crystal. If you'd give your name, please, and your address. And we are limited to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Crystal Callison and I live at 9 North Walnut Street, Janesville, Wisconsin. And I've come here to express my ongoing concerns about the lack of information that we as a staff and community have regarding our plan to resume face-to-face schooling. The first thing that I would like to say is I hope that none of you underestimate how very overwhelmed the majority of your staff are by anxiety, fear, uncertainty, and at times even a little anger at feeling helpless and being in the dark. We know from our trauma-informed care perspective that when people are in fear for their safety and their lives, and for the lives of others, that we are working from the most primitive parts of our brains rather than engaging in our prefrontal cortex. And now that both staff and students will be trying to navigate their way through teaching and learning under what many perceive as dangerous and if mishandled, life-threatening circumstances, this is unnecessary. Several districts are implementing a first quarter where most receive online learning and some with targeted specific needs are provided with opportunities for face-to-face instruction, tutoring, or check-ins. And I believe that this would be the most responsible and effective way of beginning the school year. We still have many questions, even though we have been scouring the SDJ website. Questions such as, who is doing the daily deep cleaning and what does that look like that is different from any other day of our year? What specific supplies are being given to each classroom teacher and to what extent are teachers and students going to be responsible for maintaining the sanitary conditions of all items within the classroom? Do we have sprays, wipes, gloves? What kind of masks? What kinds of shields? When we are in office areas where we work with other teachers, will plexiglass partitions be put in place to help protect us? And knowing, as was mentioned with the safety message, that it is more than likely more airborne than surface, what are we doing to make sure that our ventilation and filtration systems are in top-notch? From last I heard, hospitals have about 40 changes of air per hour, restaurants and bars about 20 changes per hour, and we are at six to eight changes per hour. We have a district promise about wellness. And while students, parents, and believe me as a teacher, I am so eager to get back to work as I have known it for the last 25 years, what we're going back to is going to be anything but normal. No touching, no partner work, no small group work, no team sports, distance from friends at lunchtime, limited movement during class time, no cross-contamination, forced direction walking in halls and stairs, constant reminders to keep masks on, and hands to the self, just to name a few. This sterile, rule-heavy environment will probably lead to many epic meltdowns from students of all ages, and none of us will be able to comfort them due to the no-touching and the social distancing requirements. What kind of wellness will that be? We believe it is a reasonable request to know answers to these questions, as well as exactly what our working conditions will be and what they will entail, so that we can make decisions as to whether truly supporting face-to-face or being in a classroom will create an unacceptable risk to the health of all involved, including students and community. Thank you.
Nick Perkapile?
Hi Nick, and you submitted a written document also, is that right?
Yes, I did an online form as well.
All the board members received that.
Okay.
Write your written document.
Okay. So I have the actual printout of the petition as well. I don't know what I do with that. If I just put it there?
There you go.
Thank you. So I wanted to give a face to that because I know it started technically by an anonymous person, but I wanted to talk about too. And thank you Ms. Myers for your words in the beginning. I think that's a very good and excellent point on the masks and how to do it. What myself, people on the petition, our main concern is the enforcement of that and making sure that as we bring students in and they have classmates, things like that, that aren't wearing the mask for whatever reason it might be, if it is not, you know, per her list of exceptions, that that is being brought up, similar to how a dress code violation might be done. So that way we are limiting the transmission and keeping the students as safe as possible. My wife and I are very fortunate in our setup at home that we could keep the students home if we needed to. We have three kids in the district. We made the choice to send them to class, hoping for the best. Obviously, things aren't going as well as they could across the world right now, but hoping that the district would come to its senses and do an enforcement policy. Overall, per the last speaker too, there is a lack of information and knowledge coming back as to what the actual plan is. Right now, I have a sixth grader who's going to start at Edison and two kids at Roosevelt. I don't, other than they're going and we're going to make them wear a mask, I don't know what the plan is. I don't know with the surveys that have happened, the online registration that's happened, how are you going to distance those kids in the school? Looking at Roosevelt, which I love as a school, these room sizes are drastically different. There are some that are huge and you could take all 20, 22 kids and socially distance them just fine, and there are others that are half that size, that it would be nearly impossible. I don't know what the plan is. So we agreed to send our kids in person in hopes that there would be a plan, something that would be enforced to keep them safe, to keep them limited in their exposure, and to keep them from doing what's probably going to happen anyway, but delaying it of a change and going virtual again. And I also don't know what those parameters are to pull the chute and get, is it a class-by-class? Is it a building-by-building? Is it a district-wide thing? What is the break class in case of emergency plan for that? So, I mean, to me, no enforcement means no mandate. You can put in there that there's a mask mandate, we want it to happen, but if there's no enforcement, there is no rule. So if no one's pulled over on the interstate for speeding, there is no speed limit. There's no enforcement on it, no one's going to believe it, no one's going to follow it. So that is my point that I wanted to make, is without the enforcement, it's not really a mandate, it's an option, just like anything else. And if we're going to enforce a dress code policy, this can easily be made part of that to keep the kids safe and extend the in-person learning as much as possible. If the goal is to get parents working and things like that again, an outbreak because of lack of masks, per Ms. Myers' comments, ruins that all right away, within a few weeks. We've seen what other states have done in other districts and other places. It doesn't last long, and it is a real concern. So I hope, my goal is that the enforcement takes effect, it helps extend and keep the kids safe, keeps the teachers safe, everyone in the community safe as much as possible. Thanks.
And I know you've seen a lot of information, but I'd encourage you to go to the district website if you can find the FAQ document. It answers many of the questions you just asked. Thank you. Next, we have Carrie and her daughter. Hi Carrie, if you could give your name and address, please?
My name is Carrie Madison. I live at 2906 Kennedy Road.
And this is Kayla that's with you?
This is Kala.
Kala.
Yeah, 10-year-old Kala. Hello, I'm an EL teacher at Jefferson Elementary School, and I'm a single mother of a fifth grader. This puts me in a unique position of playing two different roles within the district, a mother and an educator. I'm here tonight because I found myself saying something to my principal, Kurt Krieger, that I really needed to be voicing to our school board. I have strong reservations about face-to-face learning because it would be a tragedy to open face-to-face and lose a student or staff member before pivoting to virtual learning. In the course of a lengthy conversation about my back-to-school concerns, Mr. Krieger informed me that the following is being discussed as a viable option. If the district chooses digital learning for all, I will have to report to my building without my child. My reply was, please don't do that to me! Scott Garner tells me that this decision has not been finalized, and I hope that's true, but knowing that this option is being considered makes me nervous. If the district needs to pivot from face-to-face to digital learning for all, with staff reporting to buildings, consider the following. The district would be sending me two different messages because of my two different roles. As a parent, I would be told that my child is safer at home with me, and for this, I would say, "Thank you." As an employee, I would be denied the ability to stay home myself or even keep my child safer at home because I would have to find care for her in a facility with many, or with family or friends. For this, I would say, "No, thank you." Neither of us would be safer. We would be exposed to different germs from two different places. If I opted for a daycare facility, I can't imagine she would be safer there than at home with me. Besides the strain it would put on a single mother's budget, I would be competing for space with parents who need the same services because they can't do their jobs from home. Imposing upon family or friends for the entire school year is not a feasible option when there's a better way. I only have one child, and I can't imagine how compounded this problem is for my colleagues with more children. Please don't do that to us! Because I will not bring a complaint without offering a solution, I propose to offer educators a choice to either stay home with our children, or if mandated to report to buildings, allow us to bring our children. If teachers are made to report, an institution that exists to benefit children would be denying me the ability to protect my own child. Teachers are kind-hearted people, capable of loving other children's people deeply. Imagine how we feel about our own. I know this school district of Janesville can do better to accommodate a dedicated staff. We should be given a choice, like we give our students and their families. I love my job, and the start of a new school year is full of excitement and promise. However, it also brings dread. I do not dread professional development, preparing instruction for my English learners or collaborating with my colleagues. I dread needing to find temporary, full-time care for my child for 10 days of mandatory PD before the students start school. I know I'm not alone in this predicament. This year, asking friends and family to care for my daughter was even more dreadful because of COVID. I can't imagine having to find similar childcare coverage for 190 days. Please do not put valued educators in such a challenging situation. Furthermore, a strong tenet of education is differentiation. We cannot treat all students the same way because they have different needs. The same holds true for staff in these unprecedented times. I can't possibly advocate for the unique needs of all my colleagues. However, I do ask that you approach the staff the same way that the school district of Janesville approaches its students. If it becomes necessary to teach virtually, empower educators with a choice to teach from home with our children, or allow our children to come to school, to the buildings with us. I implore you to think of our tender-heartedness for our children. Please factor in our humanity, then trust us. On another subject, as an EL teacher, I would be remiss if I didn't advocate for our immigrant families. If you are feeling a little left out there, imagine how our immigrant families felt. If you are feeling a little left out there, imagine how our immigrant families felt. Or feel, translation. Although we don't have the resources to publish critical information in every home language, we can do so in Spanish. I have seen most information in Spanish, and I'd like to remind every office at the ESC to publish as much information as possible in Spanish. Alberto Cervantes does a phenomenal job, but he can't translate the documents he doesn't receive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My daughter Kala wanted to say something as well. She's brave enough to do it.
Hello, my name is Kala Alvarado-Madison. My address is 2906 Kennedy Road, and I'm a fifth grader at the Jefferson Elementary School. If it becomes necessary to go back to virtual learning, I would rather stay with my mom whether at home or at school. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks, Kala. Next, Laura Madison. Hi Laura, if you could give your name and address, please, and we limit the comments to about three minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Laura Madison, 2206 Kellogg Ave. in Janesville. I am here to discuss survey results. The JEA created a survey that was sent out to all staff on July 22nd, and it closed on July 28th. Please note this was sent to all staff, not just union members, and also not just, excuse me, not just certified teachers. All staff could take this. There were 24 questions, and 587 people responded to this survey. As the person who compiled the results myself, I would like to take this time to highlight some of the information that was gathered. Overall, what I would like to convey is this. Few teachers were part of the creation for the return-to-school plan. Due to this, many teachers are concerned that the parents of our Janesville students have confidence in the back-to-school plan because they believe that teachers were an integral part in creating this plan. Here are some key points. Almost 73% of staff feel that they were not asked or had an opportunity to give input regarding school startup. This is concerning because parents trust us as educators to make decisions in the best interest of their children. Almost 75% of staff feel that we should not proceed with the current three-option plan for return to school this fall. Almost 73% of staff feel that we should start school this fall with distance learning for the safety of students, staff, their families, as well as Janesville and its surrounding communities. 76% of staff would like in-person teaching delayed until testing is readily available. At this moment, there is not a free testing site in the city of Janesville. Over 90% of staff feel that staff and students should wear masks. We are happy that the district plans to have masks worn. However, many people have doubts about the enforcement of this requirement. Almost 93% of staff feel that if we do return to school face-to-face, that we will need to pivot to distance learning within a few weeks due to the highly transmissible nature of COVID-19. Staff was asked what would be an appropriate class size. 50% of respondents would like a class size of 10. An additional 34% would like a class size of 15. I would like you to notice this room, which is approximately double the size of a typical classroom, and it is set up for socially-distanced 19 listeners and one speaker. Almost 90% of staff felt that students or parents did not get enough information to truly make an informed decision regarding the best option for their child. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Laura. Hello David. Name, address, and...
I'm Dave Growth, 920 Columbia Drive, Janesville, Wisconsin. First, I'm going to just give a couple of comments from a letter that you received from Rob Shradley and just highlight just a few of the things that he had in that letter. Ultimately, the decision before the school board has got to hinge on data. Because a COVID-19 can spread asymptomatic, the biggest challenge in evaluating data regarding COVID-19 is the difference between the confirmed cases and the total infections that we have. The real question that we need to ask ourselves is that how many people in the community will bring the disease to school? Rock County is currently experiencing untracked community spread at this point. Only about half the cases even begin contract tracing within the 48 hours. Many experts and most other nations have identified rigorous testing and tracing program that's essential as a prerequisite for opening schools. And those things really are not in place currently. The World Health Organization identified that a positivity rate below 5% should be achieved prior to reopening community and even lower prior to opening schools. New York City has specifically set a threshold of 3%. Most European cities were well below that before they reopen their schools. Cities in the U.S. who opened with positivity rates near or above 5% have seen disastrous results, and many have already shut back down. At an absolute minimum, before opening schools, testing in Janesville must be widely available with positive test rate that's below 3%. Kind of a final point that Rob Shradley makes is that a return to schools predicted, a return to schools is predicted in essentially every model, as well as in general common sense, to cause the number of infections to go up. So if we go back, whatever the rate is when we go back, it'll probably go up from there. So even if we meet that 3% threshold prior to reopening, within weeks, we'll no longer be at that. And that's been shown by some of the schools. And the last time I spoke to this group, I asked us to look at some of the schools that were going to do the reopening, and certainly, there still is time between now and when we open to continue to watch that. And so with that said, you know, he asks, why should we reopen? And, you know, why go through that process if we're going to shut down right away? One of the things that I think about when I think about schools, I think about if we do everything exactly the way that we can, do the best job that we can, and there's not a single case that gets spread within the school day, if we could possibly do that, which would be amazing. We have something called Open Campus at lunches in our high schools, and we're going to let all those kids pile into cars and go out to lunch. At the end of our school days, I just envision my classroom and looking out the window and seeing the kids with their masks walk out the door and begin taking masks off and basically mirroring the kind of things that we see go on in our community. And so just bringing that number of kids together, I really feel that, you know, is not a good thing, and I think is one of the reasons why schools that have opened, even with good intentions, have trouble staying open. The JEA position, the teachers' professional union position on this, is that we should start not face-to-face in either distance learning or virtual learning for the first quarter. And that we should do so on, give ourselves a little bit more time to get the readiness ready on September 8th. And so I want to just convey that position again, and I think that that gives us even more time to watch and look at things. Other districts in the Big Eight have chosen to go that way. And I really think this group should reconsider that option. So thank you very much for your time, and good luck with your work moving forward.
Thank you David. And we have Mr. Richard Kikurus. I don't think we've had you before the board.
No, it's a first for me, so...
All right, and thank you for encouraging Kala out in the hallway. She spoke to the board, so thank you for talking to her. So that was outstanding.
Well, I think she realized you weren't as scary as she thought you were.
Well, faked out another one. So, name, address, please, and we're about three minutes.
I'm Richard Kikurus, 429 South Parker Drive, here in Janesville. I received a letter from a paraprofessional that works in the district, and I had a few paraprofessionals that have been calling me, and I just thought, she wanted to have this read to you, but she's unable to be here because she's at risk. So I'm just going to read this for you, and this is what she said. "I'm a paraprofessional in the district, and I love my job so much. I am willing to do whatever I can to make school and learning a wonderful experience for the students I work with, as well as my colleagues. Last March, when it was decided to go to distance learning, I felt as if paras were in a kind of limbo for several days. Then we were told if we wanted to work, there would be work for us. Of course I wanted to work. My job makes me so happy and proud. I love my work. I love the kids, and my colleagues are like my family away from home. Of course I would work and do my utmost to help make distance learning a success. Our school paired paras with a teacher, and then we worked as a team throughout the rest of the school year. For example, I was paired with a fifth-grade teacher. It worked out great for us. I did the grading, as did many other paras. I typed up and posted several online reading tests. The teacher and I met virtually with students, either individually or in groups, to help them with questions on math or reading assignments. The teacher and I were also in contact by phone at least once or twice a day, discussing plans and how to help those students who needed extra assistance. If we go to distance learning, I would love to see that kind of teamwork again. We paraprofessionals do so much to support teachers, work one-on-one with students, handle RTI classes, monitor lunches, and recess. With the suddenness of the closing last March, paraprofessionals seemed to be kind of an afterthought. But it was with the help of the paras that sudden conversion to distance learning for the last eight weeks of the school year was successful. I would like to see the district keep us paired with a specific teacher for distance learning, so the kids have their familiar teacher and a familiar paraphrase so distance learning goes smoothly. We paraprofessionals need the reassurance we are valued and part of the team as we were during the shutdown. We should not have to feel fearful that we are not important or that our jobs could be in jeopardy, because if there are so many teachers that are choosing to go to a rise, those that opt to stay at their home schools will need the assistance of paraprofessionals more than ever. Thank you."
Thank you for coming in. All right, and that concludes the citizen comments. Correct Denise? Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, I would consider approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Greg, second by Carl. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries nine zero. And on the consent agenda were several items, including the NEOLA policies and some resignations, retirements, and appointments. including the NEOLAs policies and some resignations, retirements, and appointments. Michelle Hayworth, report from PPC, Personal Policy and Curriculum.
Thank you. We had a record, I believe, 16-minute meeting on last week. And NEOLAs policies were the only topic. Many of them cookie cutter. Again, NEOLAs standardizing a lot of ours. There is a new one, though, that I would bring your attention to, the Equity Nonnegotiables. We had a presentation on this one. And it was actually the result of a collaborative effort that's been ongoing with many, many stakeholders, including communities, students, and staff across the district. And you'll see that it is a reflection that our work environment, our school environment, will be a reflection of the promises. And that will be the standard that everyone is held to. So that's the new one. There's no policy number yet. It will be assigned by a NEOLA. And that was about it. Any questions?
Questions for Michelle?
Thank you.
While it's not exciting to do policy work, I do appreciate the fact that we're tackling those and getting them aligned with state statutes. So appreciate your committee taking that on. You had far more work than 15 minutes' worth from the reading of the policies ahead of time. So that means people came prepared, so I appreciate that. Next, we have item 4.1, Financial Forecast and Facility Needs Review, Mr. Dan McCray. And I want to warn people ahead of time that we are going to do electronic voting tonight as we move through the meeting, so everybody should be logged in to your computer. All right, all yours, Dan. And Dan is two weeks away from his one-year anniversary, so it's okay to send cards ahead of time if you'd like. He could bring cake at the next meeting. That will be his one-year anniversary.
If you would like cake.
Actually, I like ice cream, if you want to know the truth. Thanks.
Although, Commissioner Hayworth, okay, when you say you have a 15-minute meeting, all right, members of the Finance Committee are most likely rather envious of that, because we've not gone through a 15-minute meeting.
Okay, so Section 4. We've been talking about our facilities, certainly since prior to my arrival in the district. I know Commissioner Audrey in Finance has worked on facilities. This district has made an investment in its facilities with an Act 32 resolution as a result of a district-wide facilities assessment. So we continue down that path, all right? But not only do we have facility considerations, all right, we also have operational considerations. And so we're going to really take those two topics, if you will, and pull them together and take you through what I believe to be, hopefully not a... Hopefully, a 15-minute PowerPoint presentation, right, at the most. So recently, as you know, this summer, on June 30th and July 8th, we convened a Community Financial Advisory Committee, all right? And so it was really a data dump, if you will, on their first meeting. And the second meeting, as we shared with you previously, was really more of an organic discussion in terms of whether or not the district should pursue an operational, as well as a debt, to address facility needs within our district. This is just really a slide that I shared with them. I'm not going to take you through all 75 of their slides, all right? But really, I think it embodies what we're trying to do. So plans are nothing, planning is everything. And that's what we've certainly been doing over the years on finance, as well as certainly since my arrival in the district. So we'll focus initially a little bit on facilities planning. So again, 1516, 1617, all right, is really when we executed the Act 32 energy work. Based upon the 1516 assessment, all right, then we move into 1920. We continue to review the outstanding items, because what we're doing is we're planning, all right? We're creating that plan to address those facility items, all right? Now, key budget item, because sometimes we get a lot of data or a lot of questions, such as, well, what are you doing on your facilities now? And just as a reminder, okay, on our operational budget, all right, and this is a great term for Commissioner Audrey that I learned, right? It's that's maintenance. That's not necessarily our capital improvement line, really. Now, some of it may be concrete, but it's probably replacing concrete. It's asphalt, it's roofing, all right? It's things related to our mechanical systems. It's 1.4. And keep in mind, that's 1.4, addressing 2,250,000 square feet, about 21 sites, if you include the ESC, and 250 acres. So we have a rather large footprint within this community when it comes to our facilities. All right, so way back, I think it was early March, right? We met at Adams Elementary, all right? And so Joe Donovan, all right, our facilitator, took you through kind of a process, because we're still somewhat, we're thinking operationally, but we're also looking to address our facilities. And so just to really remind the board, kind of our guiding principles. These are not necessarily force-ranked, all right? And I didn't plan it this way, but certainly safe, healthy, and secure facilities. And we look to the survey, all right? Their number one item, not necessarily our number one item or your number one item, as a board, right? These are essentially all equally as important, I would maybe argue, but the community address safe and secure facilities. All right, so we have facility planning, okay? Then we have financial planning, all right? So 1920 is really the first year that we introduced a forecast model for the district, all right? And then 1920, we continued to develop budget assumptions as a district. And that, if you will, is essentially the parameters in which we would develop our operational budget for 1920. Once you begin to establish those budget assumptions, all right, and so Mr. Murray asked an extremely important question recently in terms of when we look to the future, all right, when we see surpluses or deficits, what are those based on? And to some extent, they're based on assumptions, all right? So we have an understanding that essentially when we cast forward, based upon maybe an assumption now, what our salary increases are going to look like, what health insurance increase or dental is going to look like, as well as other expenses. But to kind of take you through essentially what we've been doing, right, just to quickly recap, is February, Finance Forecast. March, Board of Ed, it's a review of February. April, May, June, July, when we had our CFAC, last day of June, first day of July. So this is what really we've been kind of talking about, is really duality of trying to address our operational needs as well as our facility needs. Okay, so the forecast model. This is just, if you will, a slide, okay? It's a lot of data that goes in to feed that model, such as we talked about. So this year, we budgeted 2.45% increase in the 2021 for salaries, all right? Moving forward, we looked at 2 and 1/4. We dialed that back a little bit. Now, it's an assumption, right? We have to build a model based upon assumptions and what we historically see or what we believe we will see. It's a budget. It's not the Ten Commandments. It's not cast in stone, but it's probably fairly close, all right? Same thing with health insurance, okay? Now, health insurance is very volatile, right? You know, our loss ratio has been fairly low, which is great. So we budget conservatively. So Tina Johnson, the HR group, the benefits group, all right, working with our vendors, with our broker, to really leverage essentially the best plan that we can at an affordable rate. So you've seen changes as a district in terms of the health insurance plan over the years. And that has helped keep our rising costs really much lower than anticipated had we not made those changes. So we dump all kinds of data. We dump in what we assume to be property value increases, all right? That's another data point. We look at revenue, we look at expenses, we feed this all to the model. And so when we did that and we went through this year's budget development process, as you've seen, as we've illustrated right now, all right, we've kind of, you know, let's hope we're not going to have a budget repair bill. It does not appear as though we're going to have a budget repair bill, but we never know, all right? We're at a balanced budget, all right? But then we look to the future. And again, now we're making assumptions on enrollment, all right? Now, remember, okay, we've seen continued drops in our FTE, our membership, which affects our revenue limit worksheet. Enrollment may be decreasing, but that's good. It's bad. What I mean by it's good is our decreases are being offset by open enrollment coming in, all right? But our revenue limit, all right, is driven by our membership for those residents who reside in the school district of Janesville. And when your floor continues to erode, that's what causes us to have revenue problems. Now, you know, since in the past, we've talked about a revenue limit worksheet. It's not an expense limit worksheet. It's a revenue limit worksheet, all right? So how much revenue between state aid and local property taxes can we generate? Right now, ideally, your expenses match that revenue. It's not an expense, and you hope to capture the revenue. It's revenue, all right? And then you have your expenses to complement that. What we see in 2021, excuse me, 2122, and so on, for the next four years out, two biennial budget cycles, is an increasing deficit, all right? Now, when you're a business manager or CFO, whatever your title is, all right, is you work on assumptions, all right? And you work on modeling. And so you're conservative. We look to the past, as you've heard me say. And you say, okay, how generous has the state been to us in the past? Can we forecast in terms of how generous the state will be to us in the future? All right, so we're in year two of the biennial budget cycle. We're in COVID, okay? I'm not going to bank on a tremendous amount of investment in equalization aid, okay? Simply because the revenue is not going to be there from the state. But even, even before we introduced COVID, because you may remember we had a pre-COVID and a post-COVID, this is just our reality, all right? Whether it's COVID or no COVID. All right, but it gets a little more dangerous when we do... I mean, we could just essentially assume we're not going to see a windfall in cash in terms of state support, all right? So we're very conservative on enrollment. We're very conservative on essentially revenue. Well, will we get revenue? All right, Superintendent Pufall, I know, gives you updates. I certainly give you updates. We are not going to see dramatic increases in revenue, nor are we most likely going to see dramatic increases in our membership. And again, membership is always a three-year rolling average, all right? So if by chance we had 300 members move into the district, it takes three years for that to equate to 1.0 FTEs for full revenue limit authority. So in year one, it's about a 3.4, 7.4, 11.3, and 14.4 deficit. That's our challenge unless we change our course. All right, now someone's going to say, well, what does 2526 look like? All right, so we'll get to this a little bit. Say, it's a four-year referendum, Dan. What do we do in year five? Well, the reality is, is in year three, you start planning for your next referendum, okay? Because once you get on the referendum train, unless there are dramatic changes in Madison, relative to school funding, all right, every district that I'm aware of passes an operating. 75% of districts in the state of Wisconsin have moved in that direction. If you will, we're kind of late, all right? And maybe we're late because of the good stewardship and decisions made by this board and previous boards. And that's okay. But there's a nexus, and we're at that nexus, all right? Decreasing revenues and rising expenses. And then it's always that challenge in terms of, well, let's reduce our expenses. And again, as a reminder, we're in the people business. 78, nearly 79% of our costs are associated with people. So when we look at reductions, all right, it's not through post-it notes, all right, business cards, Scotch tape, thumbtacks, all right? We've tried to work some in terms of our energy, all right? And we really try to work with that dollar. But the reality is, is 78, 79% of our budget is people, all right? So if we look to an operational referendum, because this is also the question, is this for your teachers? You say, well, 78% for it is for staff, right? Because that's what we're in, as you all well know. So what does year five, if we get to here and we say, you know, we're done after year four, all right? I ran the model, but I can pretty much assume we're probably looking at a $4 million deficit. All right, so again, we're always planning. We're always looking forward. This is not a static model, okay? But when we look and we say, oh, it's going to get better, towards the say, let's look to the past, okay? We've moved away from CPI increases in our revenue limit authority. We've seen years where there's no increases in revenue limit authority. Now, we've seen per-student categorical aid. But this year, all right, we were to receive a $179 increase in revenue limit authority. In a declining membership environment, that pretty much is nothing for us. $0 in per-student categorical aid, all right? Not a lot of revenue coming into the district. Our payroll between Font 10 and Font 27 is approximately $75 million. A 1% increase is $750,000, excuse me. Thank you. Thousand, yes, off a couple zeros there. 2% is a million and a half. You get a 6% increase in a $10 million insurance contribution on behalf of the district, right, we're at $600,000. It goes really quick, and we've really only touched two items related to staffing, related to people within our district, all right? So if you were to get in your car, you started off in Elkhorn, you'd see an operational referendum. Drive to Delavan, see an operational referendum. Drive to Whitewater, see an operational referendum. Fort Atkinson, Jefferson, Marshall, Clinton, Stoughton, all right, just to name a few off the top of my head. You think I'd have that memorized by now, all right? So it's not us. It's really, if you will, the funding of K-12 education in the state of Wisconsin. Now, has there been investment? Absolutely. Okay, we can't argue that there has not been. But there's also been, if you will, disinvestment, all right, in K-12. So this is what we're looking at if we do nothing, all right? But it's our responsibility. And I remember shortly after I came to the district, right, Superintendent Pufall and I went onto the radio, and he really said it well. Okay, it's not Dan's district, okay? It's not Steve's district, all right? This is the community's district, all right? It's up to them to determine whether or not they want to make an investment in either the facilities or their operations to continue the level of programming that you're expected and have a historical history of providing. So we have debt, all right? Not debt, we have capital needs. We did the safe, secure pathway analysis that we shared with the board, all right? Again, that's the number one, I think administratively, as well as with the community. And then also an element that you identified as board members during the workshop. So we have our capital needs. In addition to, we need to address some boilers, all right? We have boilers that are original and buildings that were constructed in the '60s, all right? Maybe speaks well to the craftsmanship at that time, that that lasted so long, all right? But no one here probably has a 60-year-old furnace, all right, in their own home when we talk about efficiency. It's those types of investments we need to continue to make, all right? So we're going to look at if we backfill and kind of what we surveyed. Now, the survey, you recall, is really, it's, we're testing tax tolerance, all right? I know we had some discussion in terms of perhaps some confusion. Is it 400, 400 cumulative? What does it end up in year four? It's another $160 total on a $100,000 home, all right? But yes, we've collected. I had a discussion with my son, and he goes, well, so am I. 25 plus 24 plus 23, like, how old am I in years, right? But that's a whole nother story for another day that I'll entertain you with if you so desire. So we tested 40 cents. Now, the reality is, is school finance is rather somewhat complicated, all right? But it's certainly not static. And there's a lot of factors that go into it. Property values, membership, expenses, okay? That helps generate aid from the state. Membership helps generate your revenue limit authority, all right? So all those factors. It's very hard to focus on one without consideration for the others. So when we dumped this in, and we've heard feedback, the survey is long, and perhaps it was, but how much education do we do in the survey relative to school finance? You know, so we know we have an intelligent electorate, but we try to keep it at that high level, 40 cents. By the time we factor in, we're really looking at, because of state equalization aid and as a district, and we spent some time with Commissioner Myers and the Attorney, talking about equalization aid, is at a tertiary level, we're aided at 26% as it stands now. So for every dollar we would raise, that is offset, if you will, by 26% in state aid, 26 cents. So we measure 40. Okay, the first year, it's always tough because of your prior year expenses that you're being aided on. Then you spend more, because perhaps we've passed an operating referendum. When you're spending more, your aid goes up. So that's why you see a dip to 31, 21, and for some reason, we have a hiccup of 28. That's really, when we apply the equalization aid to the formula, pretty much what we're looking at. Now, there are other assumptions in the model. 2% increases in property value each year. This last year... Where are we at? 8.95. When that percentage goes up, the levy may stay the same, but as you know, the mill rate drops. And that's what we're trying to, because everyone wants to know, how much more am I going to have to pay in taxes? What's my real rate going to do? All right, so again, this is a very conservative model. We've also added in, sorry, I have to spin here, additional debt, because we want to account for, because again, we're considering two... You're considering two questions. One is an operational, one is a debt. So today, I was just chatting with Mike Clark, Janesville Craig grad, all right, in terms of, he works with Bear, who's our financial advisor. All right, interest rates right now are at 1.75%. We model 2.75% because we're going to model higher, right? Because I will say it's probably the conservative thing to do rather than modeling low and then being burned by an increase in 50 basis points or half a percentage point. All right, we also started to take a look at, because even though you'll notice it's a $22.5 million proposed consideration for the board. Typically, boards will say, you know, we're going to do that over a 20-year period, because by law, that's the extent to which you can go on a bond issue, all right? But similar to what you've done, it doesn't prohibit us from prepaying. Excuse me, I got a little fuzz here. Or it doesn't prohibit us, if you will, from saying, what does a 10-year loan look like? Because if we continue to move forward, one of the things, finance, Because if we continue to move forward, one of the things finance, and certainly my office will be charged with, is, this is maybe phase one of facilities, okay? We still have an outstanding burden, all right, to attend to. We gotta start planning for that and creating a plan to address that. All right, so I'm not trying to confuse or overburden, there's just lots of moving parts, but really only three considerations for you this evening. This is, if we were to pass the 3.5, 7.5, 11.5, and 14.5, we essentially, based upon the model assumptions, are able to keep a balanced budget as we move forward. Now, I said this before, all right, and so just to remind you, does not mean as a board, you're not gonna have to consider perhaps some very difficult budget decisions in the future. All right, if you have a bad year in health insurance, and you have a loss ratio of 30%, all right, that's going to stress, because we didn't factor in that really bad year. All right, so administratively, we're gonna have to bring a plan to you in terms of how we address that. So having been in your role in another district and passing six referenda, all right, we still had budget considerations. So just please keep that in mind. It's not case or ask or ah, but it certainly is far better, all right, than having constituents in here saying, okay, you're cutting $3.5 million because there are gonna be things on that list, all right, that are not gonna be palatable for you as a board in your consideration. All right, so this is a little bit about the model. You, sorry, Mr. President?
Thank you, I'm just, um, this, the second spreadsheet, I understand the first one.
Yep.
Second one, I'm not sure what it's showing me here, I was just completely lost. So let me ask this, what's, what I'm hung up on is this 26% of equalization aid?
Yep.
So let me get this right. So if we ask the taxpayers and the approved, the $3.5 million for 21, 22?
Yep.
And we spend it, are you saying that the state then gives us 26% more money next, the next, for the next budget year?
Yes.
So where, where is, where do you?
Yeah.
Where do you fill that in, in here?
Right, so what, what you don't see in this PowerPoint slide are about 20 tabs on an Excel document, all right? One tab, which is essentially equalization aid. So again, it's your revenue limit, your membership, your expenses, all of that begins to feed into an equalization aid formula that then kicks that out. So on here, we're gonna say, I don't see equalization aid represented on here.
Right.
And I would say, absolutely, you don't, not on this one. You'd have to pull up the Excel spreadsheet, pull the tab, and then you would essentially see the increase in equalization aid over time as a result of increased expenditures.
So I, I'm showing my weakness in quick math skills, so what's 26% of $3.5 million? 10% is $350,000, all right?
Yes.
A million?
Yep.
A million-ish?
It's probably, well, it's under, it's probably 850.
Just under a million.
Yep. And so that's why, that's why we're beginning to see the...
You understand what I'm saying, what I'm getting at is?
You're advocating for me, and I love it, yep.
But that's...
That's why you're seeing this decrease in your mill rate. All right, that, that's right, because you're getting more and more aid. Now, this is interesting, right? I'll be honest with you, so we go from 21 to 28, what's up with that? You know, I, you know, I don't wanna say it's an error, it's not an error, right? It's just sometimes how the formula works, all right? But versus saying, okay, this is why we can say it's $160 on a $100,000 home. But the reality, let's just say 25% of that, right? Because you, the revenue limit authority is going up. Again, there's a distribution in revenue limit authority, as you know, between state property, or excuse me, between state aid and local property taxes. And what you're seeing is a component of that $3.5 million, that you're raising your revenue limit authority, all right, is being supplanted by state aid at the tertiary level of 26%. Correct. Correct, and this is, this is sometimes the challenge. So Superintendent Pufall and I, all right, will start to geek out, right? And this is where, I mean, we could geek out, you know, but, you know, do we do it in the survey? That's kind of what we use finance for, right? Is to geek out and talk about equalization aid or revenue limit authority. All right, and so tertiary aid, and we're very fortunate, some districts, you know, Whitewater reside is a negative tertiary aid district. For every dollar they spend, they lose money in state aid, based upon a percentage, I don't remember anymore since I'm off the board, right? As a positively aided district, 26% at the tertiary level, right? You're getting that reimbursement in state aid. So when your revenue limit authority goes up, you're getting additional state aid versus a direct dollar-for-dollar exchange, local property taxpayers, as a result of an increase in revenue limit authority. And that's even before we begin to talk about the levy credit, and we're not gonna go there tonight. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I should defer to you, President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So in the simplest of terms, um, if we are able to, if we get assistance through a non-recurring referendum, uh, you will, you will see, uh, if that, and with that just being the other variable, right? No other variables like the recurring referendum or something like that, or a debt levy, or you will eventually see your mill rate drop because the obligation goes, the obligation to support the school comes more from state aid than it does from individual taxpayers. Am I totally off, or is that?
You're, you're close.
Okay.
Right, you're close, and that's okay, that's all right. So you do really well at your profession, right? And hopefully I do okay at my profession, right? So that's why I have people read stuff before I send it out. So, so here's an example, is, and this is where you're close, is you're getting an offset, right? So we're getting an offset, if you will, of 26 cents or 26%. Now, is that, again, that 26 is what historically we've been at, all right? Now, there are factors that feed that 26, all right? Membership, property value, expenditures, all right? But we've been right around that 26, 27, all right, historically as a district, all right? And so that's why, and again, you know, and I know we geeked out a couple of months ago, six, seven months ago on equalization aid at finance, right? That was an hour and a half, so you're glad you're not on that, right? So, so there's that, we get the offset, right? So again, we have to portray it as, this is what we're saying to increase the revenue limit authority with an operating referendum, or this is what debt's gonna called, again, or gonna cost, again, separate, right, outside of our operational budget, two different funds, as you know. All right, but here, we're focused, right? This is the one people are like, ooh, about, all right? And that's why you begin to see, cost you 39, but then you begin to get aided on that. All right, and again, even before levy credit kicks in, even before other factors. Okay, now, the challenge is, is we should always, through TPR, right, through administrative review and recommendation, be making adjustments within our budget, all right? This is a good program, this is a better program. We have to make that difficult choice, we have to make that recommendation to the board, all right? Just like any other business cycle goes through, we should always be evaluating, all right? But the question is, is okay, what are we gonna evaluate to get to $3.5 million next year in '22, '21, '22? Right, again, that's significant, and that's the challenge, all right? You've done a great job as a board, you've made adjustments and benefit packages, right? You probably had people in the room for that. All right, your salaries have not been outrageous, all right? You have to remain competitive within the marketplace. You're holding tight on other things. All right, we're at that nexus, again, like 75% of other districts in the state of Wisconsin. All right, so I had a conversation with a board member earlier today. You know, right now in Rock County, you know, I'm like, okay, I'm not sure what other districts are going, all right? I know Clinton is maybe considering, all right? Because there always is that question, well, is it just us? You know, are we the ones, only ones going in November? Right, DPI has a great website under referendum, you know, if you really wanna geek out a little bit and say, who's going, who's gone in the past, all right? It's available, it's public access, all right? When we look to our friends in the north in Madison, all right, when we talk about a $22.5 million debt, we're looking at north of 300, all right, million in debt, and an operational on top of that. When we go to Oshkosh, because Madison isn't quite our peer, all right, but it's fairly close, we essentially have the same media market, right? So then we go and say, well, what's Oshkosh doing? They're more of a peer. Hundred and some million dollar debt and an operating referendum on top of that. I'm not saying misery loves company, all right? But sometimes the issue is, as well as it us, it's not you, it's not us as an administration or you as a board, right? And I don't wanna say, okay, we got great friends in Madison, right? But it's really the model, that's what we're struggling with, right? Straining revenue, increasing expenses, just to even keep pace with our limited revenue. I feel like I'm preaching, sorry. So engagement, all right? Again, we're, we're living in COVID, right? We all got masks on, I talk behind a barrier, I can't move, drives me nuts, all right? Ideally, we'd have some more listening sessions, all right? But we at least did something, two elements that were key, engaging a CFAC, that's kind of our first litmus test, even beyond kind of having obviously discussions with finance and as a board as a whole, and then we did our community survey. Okay, now, I would probably do the community survey as, are people invested in our schools? Do people speak well of our schools? And do people want to make a continued investment? And we could argue the data, but that survey was certainly more positive, all right, than it was negative. And again, survey of importance, and when we look, all right, safety and security, tracking, retaining, high-quality staff. That's essentially what, you know, these two referendums are about.
Yeah, long time ago.
Oh, sorry.
I just being courteous when the others wanted to talk. My question is, and I can't seem to find my latest one.
Sure.
We got of these, which I don't think we've gotten in a while, probably since February or March. Are we covering with 22.5?
Right.
All red marks on here?
No.
Well, if they're critical, why aren't we? Because the budget for taking care of our structures?
Mm-hmm.
And that is pretty inexpensive, especially with the bond markets the way they are in that. And we aren't asking, right now, you're asking, what, $5 per $100,000? So what would it take? What should we looked at to cover all the red critical areas? What would it take? Would it have been $10? Would that have covered it? If we went for, said 22.5, we would've went 43? Or does that look bad for us to do that?
You know, I think it, I mean, your question is extremely fair, right? And I think what we struggle with is essentially tax tolerance, right? Which is the point you're raising, you know? And, and we've said all along, you know, we don't deny that we have 112 million, all right? You know, we're looking at essentially, and we shared previously, we got about 15 million in terms of our secure pathways into our building, right? Some life safety systems and balance of looking at boilers in six locations, all right, if you will, the heart. Yeah, we, I, I think it's...
I'm not looking to take care of it all in one fell swoop.
Right, right.
I'm looking at critical and air exchangers and a variety of other things. And our air, although adequate in the schools, should be better in many of them. They'll get by.
Mm-hmm.
But especially with COVID.
Sure.
It's more important to maybe have better air exchangers and not just get by. I don't wanna scare anyone, but I just look at this and I lay awake at night saying, why are we not covering the critical areas? I'm not looking at the orange on the borderline, or yes, we have to get to it someday, the yellows. So that, that's my question. I'm not picking on you.
No, 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 and I'm not taking it that way.
And I have a hard time doing that. On the operational, I was kind of troubled with it before, and talking to people in the community, they understood it. I was the dummy.
I went.
And that, the 40, 40, 40. But this, this is something, I've been on finance since I've been on the board, at least I was, and back in 2011. And I remember the struggles we went through, looking back through the years. I know Kevin was even sat in on some of these when we did negotiations on a variety of things. And when, when we looked at it, we said, well, we can always get to it in the future, but these are critical, and that's the way we did it. So that's the same thing to me, this is critical, and I, I just wish we could do it. I don't think we're scaring the community at another $5 for $100,000. That would add up a $400,000 home or 500 to $20, $25 a year. Most parents and most community members will go for that, I think.
Sure.
But that, so anyway, thank you for answering or trying to answer or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it's, yeah, you, you raised extremely valuable points, I, I agree. I agree in terms of, you know, we have the issues, how do we address that? You know, I think just administratively, you know, and I think a little bit fine is, is how much, right? How much? Because that, that's the rub, all right, is, is the tax impact.
To me, the truth is the truth, that the community is aware of it and made aware of it. I think they'll respond in Janesville, I'm a lifetime resident, and I know people here, and they're good people. People that have moved into the community have been too. But one of their things, even though it's a smaller section of our people that have, as they call skin in the game, or children in the schools.
Yes, sir.
They feel one of the reasons they're here in Janesville is because of the schools. But if they go down, we've got a problem.
Agreed.
So anyway, thank you, and I appreciate your patience with...
No, no, thank you. So again, we just wanted to include, again, for your review, essentially the survey results. Comparison group, 53 supran, to the, again, this is Joe's gig, 53% support in operational, 67% support of capital improvement. And then again, we get into the, the 40, 40, 40, all right? And so again, I want to emphasize, the 40, 40, 40 is really more illustrative of the concept, right? Versus trying to explain the 39, the 31, or whatever was on the previous slide that I can't remember right now, right? So that was just what we were trying to illustrate this way. Mr. Gasper was helpful in trying to look at just different models, to how do we provide clarity, all right? Because we understand transparency is important to you, and transparency and clarity is certainly important to us. So the considerations that you have before you tonight, all right, as we begin to move on here, secure pathways, some upgrades to life safety systems, an example, just one example, right? There's really, okay, is our building paging clear throughout the building and the grounds? Mechanical boiler replacements, again, we're looking at six buildings, all right? We actually kind of go into detail in the FAQ, but I'll give you an example, Lincoln still has its original boilers, all right? Monroe, some of our older, some of our 60 eras buildings still have their original boilers. Moving to more similar to what, you know, the good work that was done at Addison, reducing the footprint of that boiler, more energy efficiency. It's a boiler, it's not the entire system, to your point, all right? So we still have a tremendous amount of work, but we need to begin to chip away, and this is sometimes what you've heard me refer to in the past, is kind of phase one. All right, and then essentially, I exceed the revenue limit question, and again, we go into maintaining class size, all right? And again, maintaining class size is really looking at maintaining the TPR, all right, that essentially good instructors within our classrooms, very good pair of professionals that we heard about earlier today, all right, and other support staff. Because again, we're in the people business, all right? Student program options and services. And again, essentially, it's a four-year, what happens in year five, okay? Unless there's dramatic changes in Madison, you have a deficit, but we start planning for that really in year three. Or we're always planning for it, right? If anyone, if anyone during the school board convention went to my session in terms of the financial roles and responsibilities of the school board member, we're always talking about planning and rolling, right? We're looking at current year, the next year, and the future. We're always planning, that's our responsibility as administrators, it's our responsibility to share that information with you as a board.
And Dan, isn't it true, in year five, we see the enrollment from the research that was done start to come back up in, in Janesville?
Yeah, I'd say that's very fair, and I'd say we're maybe even starting to see that a little bit, right? Because again, we're starting to see maybe those four-year-olds, those three-year-olds, where they're starting to age into our school system, right? So we hope, right? That's, that's essentially what the UW Population Lab study said.
Right, so I appreciate that we, that's the first time we've done that research in at least 10 years, I believe, so it was real, I think. So it was real, I think, Greg. So it's been quite a while, so. There's light at the end of the tunnel. When student populations increase, that definitely helps us with aid. It takes three years to catch up, but regardless. Yes, Dale?
So what I'm hearing you say is that if the board approves going to referendum this fall, and even if it's approved, the board is still going to have some very difficult decisions next budget round because we're not talking new initiatives, we're not, I mean, there are a number of variables that we're still going to be dealing with. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, if I may just, you know, just if I may clarify just a point. So I don't think there's anything on the horizon that we're sandbagging, right? Saying, well, let's get the referendum passed, then we'll break the news to the board, all right? I'm just looking out, and I think administratively superintendent Poofal, looking out and saying, you know what? We don't know, I mean, we just don't know, all right? In terms of a challenge that may come. So I gave the example of a loss ratio, right? You may be working with your medical insurer provider, right? Our loss ratios in single digits this year. Next year, maybe we go to double digits, all right? Then the next year, maybe it goes up another 10, 15 points. Now we have back to back, right? That's going to complicate our position within the marketplace. And our rates are not going to come in, all right, with a 6% increase as we've been experiencing the last few years, all right? So we don't know that, but I think we would be disingenuous because I've gotten this as a board member, I've gotten this as a business manager saying, well, we passed the referendum, what's the problem? All right, it's a status quo for the most part referendum. If we decide, you decide as a board, say, you know what? We want to open up another charter school, all right? Okay, well, now that's, that's, we got to figure that out within our financial model, right? And that's just an example, right? But essentially, I want to say status quo in terms of nothing changes because I alluded to earlier, we're always reviewing our operations, all right? But this isn't, say, let's drive teacher pupil ratio down to 12 to 1. This is not what this referendum is designed to do. Is that, am I good? Okay, sorry.
I just want to say thank you because I know I emailed you on Saturday morning with some questions, and I really do appreciate the answers, but also appreciate the fact that you interwove those answers into your presentation tonight to be clear and transparent.
Sure.
I just, I think we're in the business of educating students, but I think it's ultimately our responsibilities, sitting behind these desks as well, to educate our community members in a way in which they understand. I've been sitting on the board now for two years, and I do have some understanding of tax levy, equalization aid, assumptions, forecasting, but not everybody does. So I think it's really important going forward that that communications plan, after resolutions go, that there's language in there that everybody can be on the same page. So I appreciate you answering those questions tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we have three questions this evening from Dan's presentation. The first is, I would entertain a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $22,500,000. A motion by Michelle, second by Jim. And we're going to vote electronically, so you have to make sure you're, you're back to the homepage of the presentation. Ready, Deb? Got everybody? That motion passes 9-0. Thank you for that. Second, we have the operating, operating revenue, pardon me, operating referendum. And that motion would read, approve resolution to exceed revenue cap authority for a period of four years on a non-recurring basis for the purpose of paying the costs of maintaining district class size, student program options and services as follows. $3,500,000 for 2021, '22 school year. $7,500,000 for the 2022, '23 school year. $11,500,000 for the 2023, '24 school year. And $14,500,000 for the 2024, '25 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Michelle, second by Carl. Any additional questions for Dan? Seeing none, let's vote. Is that it? Sorry, I looked down. That motion carries 9-0. Finally, we have, this is, this must be attorney speak. We have a final motion. Motion is to approve providing for a referendum election on the questions of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $22,500,000 and the approval of a resolution to exceed the district's revenue cap commencing with the 2021, '22 school year. Motion by Greg, second by Michelle. And any questions? Do we have a vote on that, please, Deb? Is it there? That's okay. Tell me, is, all right, that motion carries 9-0. Thank you very much, and thank you to the committee over all the years. There have been a lot, there has been a lot of work. I think I asked Commissioner Audrey, he's been on finance for eight plus years in this district and provided tremendous leadership, and Carl, and Kathy, and Jim for serving on that committee. So appreciate all the efforts that go into this. And it is true that, Dan, we are only, we're only investing 20% of what our needs are in capital, but that is probably what the committee would advocate for at this point, so, thank you. Next on the agenda, everybody okay, or do they need a break? Okay. Next on the agenda is back to school update superintendent Poofal.
Good evening, commissioners and community members, faculty, parents, students. Grateful for the opportunity to address all of you this evening and give you an update as we move forward with implementation of the board's approved back to school plan going back to July 14th. And, you know, as, as we've talked about all along, this is a very fluid, dynamic situation, and so I think you'll see examples of that tonight. And, and we will certainly see examples of that moving forward in the days ahead. So many of you in here are athletes or connected to somebody who is an athlete, maybe one of your own children, maybe a neighbor or a community member. And, and you know, when, when we get into sports, particularly if there's a ball involved, you know, the performer, whether that's a tennis player, a golfer, a baseball player, is always looking for the sweet spot. Looking for that exact angle, you know, where that ball is going to go a little bit further, a little bit faster, a little bit more accurately, depending on what sport you're talking about. And if you don't find that sweet spot. Well, the same thing's true in education. There's a sweet spot for students, and a lot of factors go into that. But at the end of the day, all of those factors come together to determine how a student's going to learn best. Now, in baseball, physics, the physics of, of a bat and a ball are pretty simple, right? The execution of those physics is, is not so simple. We'd all be major league baseball players making a lot of money otherwise, and here we all are. In education, when we look at factors that go into the sweet spot, it's more complicated though than just a bat and a ball. It's the curriculum, it's the instruction, it's the assessment, it's the facilities, it's your staff, it's their training, it's the community in which you reside, and the list goes on and on, infinitum, really. So while in baseball, it seems easy enough to find a sweet spot, albeit difficult to execute it, even in baseball, sometimes the unexpected happens. Well, in baseball, you know, when this happens, it's pretty simple. The batter goes to the dugout and gets a new, gets a new bat and comes back up to the plate. But what if one day, out of the blue, something happened that changed the entire scope of the game? If baseball's looked like this, if they weren't round anymore? That would change, change the game. The angles, the speed, all the mechanics that people have gotten good at perfecting would all be very different. In other words, you'd have a game changer. Baseball as we know it wouldn't exist anymore. Doesn't mean it wouldn't exist, but it wouldn't exist as we know it. Everything that we know about those angles, about pitch speed, about all the, you know, mechanics that go into a hitter or a pitcher or catcher would all be different. And the same thing is true in education. See, COVID-19 changed how education looks and will look moving into the future. We're still in the business of educating kids. We still have our district promises. We still have our core values. But how we deliver those has to begin to look differently. So there's the way we used to do things, and then there's us trying to figure out how we have to do things moving forward. Because the virus is here to stay. This isn't like polio where there's going to be a vaccine and everybody who gets that vaccine is going to be bulletproof from polio. This isn't going to be like that. Even when there is a vaccine, it's going to be more like the seasonal flu. And our epidemiologists and our medical experts, our scientists are going to be chasing that virus year after year after year. Some years, they're going to, you know, be fortunate enough to get that vaccine really dialed in, really accurate. And, and for the most part, most people that year will probably be pretty, in pretty good shape. Other years, just like with the flu vaccine, maybe not so much. Last year was an example of that with the flu vaccine. It ended up not being very effective. Lots of people who had the vaccination still ended up getting seasonal flu last year. So as all of you know, on the 14th of July, the board, in its infinite wisdom, approved a back to school plan. And that plan was predicated on giving parents choice. It was predicated on survey results that, that went out to the community, to our parents. And of course, people had a number of options, and those options are detailed up here. You're very familiar with those at this point. Obviously, all day face to face is an option for kids. Completely virtual learning is an option for kids at all grade levels. And then in grades six through 12, there's a hybrid where you can be in school part of a day and at home part of a day. So you have at your place tonight, the enrollment numbers, just in our, I didn't put all the charter schools on there, we just grabbed the, the 12 elementary, three middle, and two high schools. And I'll take a couple of minutes to walk through those with you. Just as a point of reference, the very first column gives you what was the enrollment in each of these schools back in March, right before COVID happened? What was our projected enrollment for the 2021 school year, which we're about to enter? Currently, the next column, the third column, shows you as of today what the enrollment in virtual school is from each of those respective schools in numbers, and then the final column gives you a percentage. And as you can see, you know, and, and this is all, by the way, with 81% having completed the enrollment process. So we still have 19% of our families or our students who yet, are yet to finish the enrollment process. And we're reaching out to them regularly, trying to encourage them to do that. So at this moment in time, we have just slightly over 2,600 kids that are, that are scheduled to go to a RISE virtual academy. Depending on what building you're in, you can see that that, that is running anywhere from the 20s to the low 30s in terms of a percentage of the population from that school with 19% of our families yet to register. Now, one of the things we've talked about, and I, you know, I'd be, it'd be, you know, mistake to not remind us of this every single time we talk about back to school, is that what we're talking about is based on what we know today, right? And as the virus evolves, particularly in our community, for better or for worse, you know, we have to be continuously in a position to adapt. While our, while our programming is able to be, you know, those three models, that doesn't mean at any moment in time that we won't have to pivot to virtual learning for a couple of days, for a couple of weeks, or for a longer period of time. And know that we are prepared to do that. Allison, McGrath and I were talking this afternoon. There's nothing easy about any of this. But honestly, pivoting to virtual would be easy compared to what we're trying to execute right now. Not necessarily better. So let me take a few minutes to talk about three things that we're hearing a lot. We heard about these things from a number of our speakers. We're in the process of continually updating the district's webpage. I think Patrick's going to have an update, particularly around safety issues coming out, probably by the end of the week, maybe, I think, Patrick. Trying to give you some wiggle room here, so. So that, you know, we're constantly, you know, updating and revising those, those documents in preparation for the start of the school year. So I'm going to dive in first with some, some safety things. This is by no stretch of the, I mean, we'd be here for a couple of hours for me to like really go into detail about just this one topic. So this is an overview. The first thing I want to say, of course, is we let the experts be the experts. All the work that we do in this area, whether it's about cleaning and disinfecting procedures, whether it's about air exchange, whether it's about social distancing, mask wearing, whatever it is, right? We're always consulting with the partners in the health departments at the local and state level. I was in a one-on-one call with the health department again today. I've got a group meeting with them Thursday morning. You know, we're like getting to be best of friends here, I guess. So the Department of Public Instruction and of course lots of other organizations as well that we pay attention to. One of the big barriers for some districts, not, not as much in Janesville, is busing. Like, if you really bust, like the district I used to work in, we yellow bust five or six thousand of our students. Well, they have a whole different, like, problem, right? We have 10 bus routes, yellow bus routes in the school district of Janesville. I know Dan was meeting with our bus company folks as recently as late last week, talking about the back to school plan. As, I'll use 30% as a ballpark number, right now, of our students have chosen to go virtual. That's on average 30% of kids that would have been riding the bus that won't be on the bus. That allows us to spread kids out, physically distance. The buses will, will be running all the routes. We're not reducing routes because all of a sudden we have more open seats. No, we need those open seats to spread kids out. The bus company will be disinfecting, wiping down that bus every single day. Kids will be required to wear masks on the bus. And we're monitoring, we have one, one route in particular that we know might be a hotspot where we might need to add a route because we wouldn't be able to get kids spread out enough on the bus because of a high ridership rate. And so we're prepared to do that, and, and, you know, we're, we're full steam ahead to make transportation work. Obviously, in the city, we have kids who bike, we have kids who walk, we have kids who drive, they dropped off, we have kids who ride city buses. Obviously, we're closely with the Janesville transit system. We're fortunate here in Janesville, we have a, a city government led by We're fortunate here in Janesville, we have a, a city government led by Mark Freitag that's pretty aggressive about safety measures and protocols. And, and that applies to JTS as it does in everything that the city does. And so we feel really comfortable with what that process looks like. And again, we'll have less kids getting on the city buses because, again, if you're learning from home virtually, then you're not getting on the city bus either. We're going to be asking every parent, every day, to go through a health check process with their children before they come to school, to take their temperature. There's a series of screening questions that is published from the CDC of how, you know, things like, do you have not only a fever, but do you have a cough? Do you have aches and pains? Do you have the right, these symptoms? And we're going to be really aggressive about asking parents to not send their kids to school if they have those symptoms. To not mask those symptoms with medication, over-the-counter medication, where, you know, where you can push a fever down for a few hours. And then by late in the morning, you know, we have a child sitting, you know, in a health room with, with a fever again because the medication wore off. So that's going to be new behavior. And one of the things you're going to see for all of us moving forward is we're all going to have to behave differently. Because again, the virus is here to stay. And so if we want to be able to get out of our rabbit holes and to have whatever the new normal of life is that we can resume so that we balance safety with our ability to live life, then, then we have to all be willing behaviorally to make some changes. So yep, I know moms and dads, I remember when my kids were little and I remember how busy it was at my house in the morning. And I remember how one more thing to do, even if it only took a minute or two, might feel like, I just don't have time for this. But that's what we're going to have to ask people to do. Heard a lot about face coverings, mask wearing. Kathy, thank you so much for your remarks. I deeply appreciated hearing them for the second time, second week in a row now. You're spot on. You, you've succinctly and beautifully laid out what the district's face covering policy is. Obviously, we have some kids who will have, and staff, who will have a medically documentable reason for why maybe they could only wear a shield or why they can't wear anything, right? We're going to have to always accommodate those kids and staff members based on verifiable, you know, needs that they have. But, you know, folks, at the end of the day, when we talk about altering behaviors, really the number one tool we have in our box is wearing a mask. Our number. And so, you know, there's a lot of bantering about, you know, well, what are we going to do, you know, if kids choose not to wear their mask? Well, we have something that we've had in place for a long time at school. It's called a progressive discipline policy. And it typically starts out with problem solving and coaching. Call the mom or dad, let's solve the problem and let's get the child wearing the mask. We don't like go-to suspension right out of the gate, right? But at the end of the day, the progressive discipline policy is in force for mask-wearing, just like it is for any other rule violations. Social distancing is the other really big strategy that we have, getting, getting apart from one another. That's hard to do in a school. It's hard to do in a school. Not going to lie. Certainly, part of our ability to do that hinges on that enrollment at RISE. Tomorrow, Scott and the principals are meeting at, I think, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, if I remember right. Scott's put it best, I, I thought about actually doing it, bringing the staffing plan that we currently built this spring. And then you can kind of just go like this with that, right? Because they have to start overbuilding a new staffing plan. And they'll do it. They'll get it done, they're ready, they've been doing their homework. We're going to have to hire some people. Where those people are is going to be moving around because we're going to use the ability to shift people that we know have ADA, people meaning staff, you know, who we know have health issues or maybe a spouse at home who has a health issue. Because of the high enrollment at RISE, we're probably going to be able to pretty much accommodate all those people. Or at least give them the choice to become virtual teachers. And then backfill, you know, where we have to, back in the buildings. People in a room, physical distancing isn't, you know, there's no magical number. Our, our parent here from Roosevelt earlier tonight talked about how in Roosevelt, and this is true in a number of our schools, we have some rooms that are really big and some rooms pretty average and some rooms a little smaller, right? And so how many kids fit in a room is, is not a magic number. It's about math. Six feet, by six feet is 36 square feet. Times 10 kids is 320 square feet. And you can do the math from there. So you have to look at what room you're in and you have to look at what fits. I'll jump ahead a slide without going to the slide. Fayed's going to be outside. Why? Because it's safe, kids can be spread out. And guess what? They won't wither away in the wintertime either. I used to love playing outside in the winter. Well, guess what? The gym just opened up. Lot of square footage in there. Our principals meeting this morning, we reiterated and emphasized with them, you guys need to have a building plan that uses every available square foot that you have in the most strategic way that you can to spread kids out as much as you possibly are able. Obviously, the staffing plan will be addressing that. We will be trying very much to figure out where we've got too many kids or where we have not, not that many kids, move staff around accordingly. Now, you're going to hear complaining from some staff about that. I'm just going to put that out there right now. Some people are going to move voluntarily. Other people might have to be moved involuntarily and they might be, be upset about that. I, I understand that, it's the middle of August. People are familiar with the curriculums they've taught. I get all of that, right? But these are unusual times and these are unusual circumstances. And yeah, normally, we'd have been doing all of this in the spring. But here we are and it's August. So I'm just going to warn you about that right now. So what happens if somebody has anything from a sprained ankle, a skinned elbow, to COVID symptoms? Well, first of all, you're not going to sit a kid with COVID symptoms next to the kid with a skinned elbow for obvious reasons, right? So now we have to have, like, separate physical spaces. We have these identified in every single school. We are working with the health department on protocols. And as much as I'd love, you know, we have a lot of people who want certainty about, well, what happens when? What happens if a student comes to school that is identified with COVID? Or a staff member, or a student who had a family member at home? We have, we have drafts of all of that, but we're frankly reluctant to publish them because what the health department repeatedly says to us is every case is a one-off. Every case will be evaluated based on the uniqueness of that, of that case, based on the circumstances of what happened in that situation. And we have some people who, if we publish something, are going to want to say, well, it's got to be like this. That's what, you know, that's what it says on this piece of paper. Well, those are models. Those are examples. You can't capture every one-off with, with examples. And so we have that work and, and, and we're, we're prepared to deal with all of those things. Cleaning and disinfecting. I didn't bring it up here, I left it laying on my desk. Just hot off the press, I'll send it to you tomorrow, late this afternoon. The maintenance and custodial department's published a 15-page manual and guideline for cleaning and disinfecting and what that will look like. I, I want you to know that we've mounted 900, as you see them around the building here, wall-mounted hand sanitizer dispensers. Those are mounted all, there are 900 of those in the district now. We have plans to have disinfecting wipes and sprays, you know, the buildings will be cleaned by the custodial crew once a day because that's what the guidelines say. But we also recognize that things happen inside of a classroom. Right? And so we've got like, I don't know how many, like pallets of wipes and, right? So that, that stuff will be available, disinfecting wipes, in every room all the time. So that if a staff person needs to pull on a pair of gloves because whatever, right? Gets sneezed all over the place or something and it needs to get wiped, that'll be there. Kids won't be sharing supplies. Can't. Not only the stuff they bring from home, but our stuff. Math maniplatives, I know that's something Allison's working on. Our, our ventilation systems, Carl, to your point, there, you know, there's always room to make them better. But, but our, our ventilation systems, whether it's one of our air-conditioned buildings or one of our ventilator non-air-conditioned buildings, all meet state guidelines as we know them today. Now, these, sometimes these things change, right? And then we have to be ready to adapt. What about food service? Again, you know, I'd love to say, here's the one-size-fits-all for how schools, you know, food service is going to work, but it's different in every building. Every principal is working and putting a plan of action in place that will work and make sense in their building. So in many of the elementary schools, but not even necessarily all, kids will actually eat in their classroom. But being a really kind of a cohort group, right? If you're in an elementary school, that group of kids will be a self-contained, each, each, each class, you know, Mrs. Smith's third graders will be a self-contained group for virtually the entire day. And so we think about, how does school look different? Well, there's a big difference, right? That's the playground, that's lunch. Because they're going to not have, they're not going to like some of that because their best friend might be in, you know, the, the room next door. And there's literally not going to be an opportunity for those kids to interact with each other during the day. Carl?
Just a quick question. Some lunches are reduced, some are free, and some not reduced. Are we just making them all free? Or are we going to coin changes in every room?
So thank you for asking that question. This spring, when, you know, the virus first hit back in March 26th, I'm not going to forget that day. The federal government shortly after that, and the food service program is regulated by the federal government, released all kinds of flexibility. So the fact that we were able to serve kids curbside, not even have to take a name, not have to worry about whether they had money in account, that was because of the flexibility we were granted this spring. We do not have that flexibility moving into the new school year. And when I say "we," that's the United States of America. And we do not anticipate getting it. So kids, no matter whether we're in school or whether we're virtual or whether we're high, no matter what, whatever the model is, whatever the, the upcoming days and weeks bring us, to feed kids, they have to be a Janesville student, school student. They have to have a lunch account with money in it because they have to pay for that lunch. Unless they've filled out and qualify for free lunch, then obviously they'll get a free lunch. Whether we're serving kids normally in the cafeteria like we always do because we're face-to-face or whether we're high-bred and somehow trying to feed kids out on the curb like we were, it's going to be completely different. So we have a lot more restrictions. And that's one of our concerns is we have a lot of kids who are food insecure in this community. So I'll give you an example. This is just one school, right? I talked about an elementary school, what about a secondary school? Franklin, I talked to Charlie Ernest today. They've got a big auditorium, just like almost right down, really close proximity to their cafeteria. And they've got their kids divided into two groups for each lunch period. Half of them on, on A-Day will eat in the cafeteria and the other half will be eating in the auditorium. And then on B-Day, it flip-flops. And they've done the math, they've counted seats, they've looked at chairs in both of those physical spaces. They can have all the appropriate physical distance they need. It's really important when we're eating because you can't eat with a mask on. Right? And so that's the solution at Franklin. Every school has a different solution. They all know what the rules are and what the expectations are.
Excuse me, Steve? One more, one more question. You're doing good, appreciate it. What about children at RISE that are a virtual school? What will happen with their lunches?
So the kids that are virtual, we will, the last I talked to Jim, and, and Dan, if I stray here, correct me, but the last time I talked to Jim, which is probably a week, maybe even more than that ago, we will be serving curbside from the three middle schools. And, and the target group for that, you know, for that, for those spaces are our virtual kids. So at least we tried to hit the main neighborhoods around town without, you know, we need most of our staff. So now they're serving face-to-face kids at school. So we can't like pull them all out like we did in the spring. But if we go down to three sites, we still hopefully get in enough physical proximity so a kid can get on a bike or whatever, somehow get, get to that site and get food. Again, following that new protocol that I just described that we will have to follow.
Just, just an add-on.
That's a good question, Scott, I think.
What about in the past, we've had breakfast, lunch, and all that stuff? Volunteers, churches, things like that, do it. Is that a possibility to incorporate?
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't been there in a couple of years.
We can't do that.
We're, we're not, and, and under the new rules, this isn't even someone in here tonight, but it's certainly on the, on the website.
Okay.
Not allowing volunteers into the school because...
Well, I'm thinking just to serving lunch, getting the curbside.
Yeah, our, our staff will definitely be able to handle the, the plan that we have, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
I believe we removed volunteers in the elementaries a couple of years ago.
I thought we did.
Yeah. Probably not.
Recession, same thing, that's obviously mostly an elementary thing. You know, kids, kids are going to, again, each school's got to have its own plan. Sometimes that plan might just be rotating different groups out, you know, so that everybody's out there at once as much as they might have all been. Today is maybe, you know, our class has turned to be on the new jungle gyms that we put in that kids desperately want to be on. And tomorrow, that might be, you know, the class next door and we're over in this part of the, you know, green space, and we're lucky here in Janesville, we have a lot of acreage. Literally with all of our physical schools. We have a lot of green space and we have a lot of outside space in general. And so it will help us spread kids out, whether it's recess or whether it's Fayed class. It'll, it'll enable us, again, to maximize the use of all of those spaces, both inside our facilities and on our grounds. So again, this is just a snapshot, right? Patrick's going to be publishing a whole bunch of more stuff beyond this, certainly including this, but, but beyond this. We will, we will continue to learn. I just, I'm on the board at the Y and Angie Bolson, who's the executive director there today. And I talk all the time and she just, you know, they've had kids all summer. And so she just sent us a one pager today. I asked her if she would and she was kind to take a few minutes and, and just say, what have you learned this summer? Like, what worked, what didn't work in terms of keeping kids apart? Different situations that came up that you hadn't anticipated in your plan? You know, we're trying to leverage our knowledge of, of, of everybody that, that we can to learn from them. Delavendarian had face-to-face summer school, starting right after July 1st this summer. They had 200 kids, okay, not 2,000, 200, it's a small district, but they had 200 kids in one building attending summer school. They had one kid early on who ended up testing positive for COVID. There was no spread at school, their safety protocols worked. We're going to have people show up at school with, that are going to end up having or being diagnosed with COVID. Frankly, it's already happened during our summer athletic program. The key is, is can we prevent it from being spread when, when the kids and staff are with us? That's the key. And our protocol's robust enough to account for that. So let me, let me transition. You remember I had three topics that I said I'd talk about? That's the one I'm going to spend the most time on because I know you all want to get home before the sun gets really down. But I, I think it's important that I talk a little bit about community needs. The biggest group of people on our parent survey said they wanted their kids back at school. Like you, I've talked to lots of parents. Some of them have selected hybrid. But many of them, frankly, the majority, have selected back-to-school for a variety of different reasons. Sometimes it's just about how their child learns best. Sometimes it's about mom or dad needs some space. Sometimes it's because mom and dad have to go to work. And we heard from one of our staff members tonight... And we heard from one of our staff members tonight talking about the dilemma you have if you, if you can't go to work, or if you have to go to work, excuse me, and your child's not physically at school. Well, if we're not open, the great paradox, the great irony of the presentation we heard from that faculty member is, it's the recommendation we have from the GEA is asking us to put all of the parents in our community in the exact same spot that teacher does not want to be in. That's not okay. Our employers, and I have to give them a lot of credit. As you know, I, you know, historically spend a lot of time in the community. I have a lot of relationships in all parts of the community. Not once, prior to you as a board, making a decision about what back to school was gonna look like, not once, did a single employer contact me, and to the best of my knowledge, any of you, and try to leverage your decision. But I can tell you, I've had a lot of employers, from, from some of our small businesses, to frankly, some of our very biggest corporations that employ thousands of people in living wage jobs, once you approve the plan, reach out and say thank you. Because they were really fearful about what the future would bring if they couldn't have a reliable workforce. And those same people get paid from those good living wage jobs. And they come home every single day, and they take care of their kids, and they pay the bills, and they feed them. And this is, this is a difficult spot for all of us to be in. We want people to be safe, but life has to go on. We have to evolve, and, and we're gonna, I'd like to say our plan's gonna be perfect, and, and we're not gonna make a mistake, and we're not gonna have a spread. But the reality is, is that's probably not true. We're all gonna learn. And that's a really, really difficult spot for us to be in. None of us, again, like I talked about last time we talked about this, none of us signed up for this. Nobody. Right? But here we are, and so we've got it figured out. Let me jump to that third topic, our kids. There's a reason why we have school the way we have school. Kids coming, spending time with a trained professional in a classroom. It's because for the vast majority of them, it's how they learn best. It's how we get them ready for what comes beyond school, to be contributing members of the community. To have work skills, to be socialized, have interpersonal skills. So clearly, for the vast majority of kids, coming to school is the way they're going to learn best. Social, well, I don't know about you, but I, I, it's been a long time since I was in middle or high school, and I can tell you probably, probably true for you too. You know, my favorite part of the day wasn't necessarily worrying about whether I was gonna learn the quadratic equation or not. It was like hanging out with my friends. I had a conversation just a couple of days ago with a 15-year-old. Youngster that's gonna be a sophomore this year. And he, and he said, Mr. Fuvali said, "You know, I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but I can't wait to go back to school." So always be careful what you don't ask for. You know, many of our kids need emotional support, nutritional support, other things that aren't even on this list. And finally, tonight, you just passed an equity policy. A policy, policy that says we have to be more aware of, we have to do better when it comes to making sure that all kids have the same opportunities to learn. And unfortunately, virtual learning affects different kids differently. And the kids that are the least likely to be successful on average are the kids from our least resourced families. We've heard numerous times from Mrs. Richardson, going back over the last couple of meetings, that, that's a resourced home. I'm grateful things went so well for her son. That's not the experience that a lot of our other kids had. It's not okay for us to leave kids behind. Our promises say otherwise. Our hometown Brewers, sorry, Greg. Participated in the longest game in Major League history, 1984. Longest as defined by time. Eight hours and six seconds. Why did I pick baseball tonight? Why not football? Like, I went up here and said, "Relax," like Aaron Rodgers did a couple of years ago, right? Because baseball is one of the few team sports that is not regulated by a clock. Game's over when it's over. However, however many hours, however many innings, it's not over till it's done. Of course, the great Yogi Berra said just that. Now, by the way, the longest game, just for your information, in terms of innings, occurred on May 1st, 1920. The Boston Braves and the Brooklyn Robins lasted 26 innings instead of 25, but the game got done in a shorter amount of time. And oh, by the way, baseball legend, for those of you who are into, into this, Carlton Fisk, in that Brewers-White Sox game caught all 25 innings. 25 innings behind the plate. Commissioner Murray, you drew some umpire, and I bet that's not a pretty, very easy task. He was in it for the long haul. Wasn't easy. So that's what we have to think about. School's not gonna look the same. Not just this fall, forever. And we have to, we have to be part of figuring out how to build that new normal. And it's gonna be hard work, and, and we're gonna scuff our knees along the way. We're gonna have celebrations where things go well. We're gonna have to listen to one another. We're gonna have to learn from each other. And at the end of the day, we're gonna have to modify our behaviors. And every time I have a public audience, I always say this, and so some of you probably heard me say this before, because I say it every time I have a public audience, whether it's the radio, no matter what I am. A public school district is a reflection of the community in which it resides. Period. That's true for everything, and it's certainly true for COVID. And if our community wants our schools not just to open, but to stay open, then our community needs to change its behaviors. People need to wear a mask. People need to distance. People need to avoid crowds. And to the extent that they do, we will succeed. And to the extent that they don't, we will struggle. And until everybody figures it out, and we get a new normal in place, just like we had to with, oh, smoking. Everybody used to smoke everywhere. Get on the airplane, smoke. Go to restaurants, smoke. And what do you even thinks to do that now? Because we have a new normal. So I hope we can get a new normal a little faster than we did with smoking. Because it took like 50 years. That's a little too long. I'd like to hope we can do a little better than that. So at this time, I conclude my remarks. The director's team is amongst us this evening. Again, super proud of these folks, super proud of our principals, our teachers, our paras, our historians, our maintenance folks, all hands on deck. It's all hands on deck to figure this out. So questions that any of you might have?
Questions?
Yeah, I don't wanna take a lot of time or anything, but thank you for that last part. Do it, follow the rules. But what bothers me, and I do get out, tonight, even on the way to this meeting, a group of kids, probably about 10, 12 years old, down the street, buddy, buddy, you know, this, no mask in sight, nothing. We have to change it with the parents. Then the children might follow. And you're right, I see it every day at my job, and I see it out when I go to the grocery store. And of course, I'm smart enough not to say a word. So anyway, thank you very much for that last part.
Thank you very much, and for your presentation and your leadership. Thank you so much for, uh, both you and, I call you guys the Steves, by the way, when I have to. I saw, I'm thinking about why, I've gotta email the Steves again. But thank you so much for, uh, for responding and, and talking me through all of this stuff this year. I really appreciate it. And it's been, uh, you know, if, and, and maybe I'm, I'm personalizing too much, but as a person that's going back into the classroom here in a couple of weeks, and, and has pre-existing conditions. And I just found out, by the way, I'm also teaching, in addition to, in person, apparently I'm also doing a remote class as well, which is fine. But again, it's another thing I just found out just before this meeting. And so thank you for talking me off, you know, back from the ledge, uh, all this, um, this entire summer, pretty much. And I want to thank all the people who have emailed, um, community members and staff for their, for their questions and concerns. And I've, I've tried to respond to as many as I can. And I share a lot, yeah, I share all your concerns as well. And I feel, I feel very, uh, I feel assured by what I've heard tonight. You know, it's hard to say confident, because, um, for obvious reasons. So, um, regarding the mask policy, I'm really grateful that the governor put that mandate in place, and of course, that the district is following it. And as a teacher, I can tell you that, that policies and rules sometimes are not, um, uh, are not enforced in the classroom because the teacher feels as though they will not be supported by the administration. And so they pick their battles, you know? And, um, and I, I appreciate the progressive discipline policy. And I'm just, I'm just asking you, begging you, um, that, that you, that all of the administrators within the district support their teachers when they've got a kid that refuses to put a mask on. As a matter of fact, I would even say that that progressive discipline, uh, approach, while I understand the policy and the need for it, might need to be tightened up a little bit. This is not a cellphone issue. This is an issue that if that kid does not follow that rule, affects the kid next to him and the family that that kid, uh, you know, goes home to. This kid, the kid that refuses to wear a mask is not just harming themselves. And so I just, I just, I'm begging you to assure and to, and through your actions as well, that that policy will be enforced in the classroom. Thank you.
I too wanted to thank the administration for all of the leadership, and I know the tireless hours that you've all worked and put into this. It's in ongoing, and it's planning, and lots of changes. And also for the flexibility of the staff as they're going through changes, like Kathy just mentioned. I mean, every industry is going through changes, and so it's inevitable. But I hope that everyone has it, and to your point about the reflection of the community, that, you know, the way that we do go back and the attitudes that we bring to those classrooms are definitely gonna be a reflection of how successful this is as well. So hopefully, everyone goes in it with a positive, um, approach. I liked your sports reference. I found a tea in my pocket. Scott, you know, you and I always talk about this. I golfed a few holes before I came tonight. You know, and, and I liked your social, definitely with the social part. My, I have a fourth grader, and he said that he's so excited to go back because he wants to see what new friends are in his classroom. So it's exactly to what you said. They need that social. They want to be back with their buddies. And, um, the other, I have, one other point I wanted to bring up is the success of Arise is truly, it's a lot. And then the FAQs, which I do encourage everyone to go read that whole site, go through every FAQ, there is that checklist. So will, will Arise be successful for me or a good fit for me? And it is all about that accountability, and it's gonna take a lot of parent engagement. I can tell you, I mean, I, I already mentioned Aubrey did a summer class at Arise last two summers to be able to graduate early, and it's a lot. You know, if they aren't self-disciplined, she is, and thankfully, I didn't have to help with Algebra II last summer or Senior English this summer. But, you know, for kids who aren't, I, one of mine wouldn't be successful in that environment. So that is gonna take a lot of parent engagement for them to be successful, and we don't want any gaps, or the gaps to get any worse. So my question is, the only question I have, I love, this presentation was very good. Do the numbers that we see here today have any, do we know what open enrollment is within this? Any, any, was, was open enrollment calculated? And do we know what that looks like, or how that trended with our? I know Arise is a unique curriculum that we have, and a unique opportunity that we have. Could you speak to the change possibly, or even email it out later this week?
Yeah, so, you know, open enrollment is still open, right? So that's a moving target, yeah, both in and out. I can tell you that we are seeing, in addition to our own district kids who we've talked about pivoting to Arise for this year for safety reasons, I can tell you that we definitely have picked up some students from area school districts as well, which on average will help our OE ratio go in the positive, which going back to Dan's presentation earlier, could give us a little bit of help, again, if it lasted for time, and not just one year. We also are picking up some kids from parochial schools, from our community and area communities, who, you know, are offering face-to-face instruction, but don't really have the, the resources and the, you know, the, the opportunity that, that we do to offer virtuals. So for those parents, they've opted to, to our environment. What I don't have, you know, is I don't know how many kids we have OE and out, besides our normal, right? So somebody might say, "Well, you know, I'd, I'd rather go to one of the parochial schools because it's face-to-face, and they have a really small number of kids in a really small school. And so I want face-to-face, but that's a smaller envi," you know, so, right? So until, until all of that settles out, you know, this fall, we won't know what the actual counts are. But I, I know we, we do have inflow more than normal. I just don't know what the outflow is right now.
Yep. Well, the only question I have is on staffing. We've still got a lot of kids that we're not sure where they're gonna sign up. Are you gonna be able to realistically reshuffle and retrain the staff in this short period of time?
We're sure gonna try. That's, that's all we can do. We will meet tomorrow. We have an influx of teachers that need to move to Arise, but we have a list of volunteers. And we ask staff ahead of time to see if they'd be willing to volunteer. Plus, we also have staff who have some accommodations that need to be made. So we have a large list that we're starting with prioritizing first. And then what we have to do is shuffle within the current buildings, the brick-and-mortar buildings, to determine where we can move staff, because obviously, with so many at Arise, we have less in the buildings, which also helps our classroom ratios. And us to be able to social distance, but we have to be physically responsible as well and, and understand that safety, we can be safe, but we can also be prudent in how we distribute our staff. So that's our challenge this week.
Thank you.
Dale, it's a great question. What's keeping me awake right now at night is scaling up to be ready for 2,600 kids. A school went from 200 to 2,600 overnight. It's one of the biggest schools in the state of Wisconsin right now, if not the.
It's one of the biggest schools in the state of Wisconsin right now, if not the. And so, uh, it's a three-day training for the staff, for the staff that will be new at Arise. Dr. Parr and his existing staff are ready as soon as they start getting the names of who those folks are going to be, which will be literally probably, some of them starting already tomorrow. And staff are back, of course, next week. We've got a two-week window, and, and those Arise staff to be will be commencing their three-day training next week. And they will have kids shortly thereafter. And so, there's a, there's a big learning curve and a big growth curve that's got to go on there. And it's, you know, again, I'd like to say that's all going to be perfect, you know, on day one. I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, right? There's going to be a learning curve for the staff, um, there's going to be a growth curve there for, for a lot of kids and families. And, um, we're going to, we're going to be in it together, we're going to work together, we're going to extend grace to one another, we're going to problem solve, and we're going to be about solutions for kids.
Well, thank you, thank you to you and to the staff for the work that they've, yeah, Kevin? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just, I have a comment and a couple of questions. I was having a Kool-Aid stand with my grandson two days ago, and, um, two teachers stopped and paid way too much money for a glass of Kool-Aid. But I just wanted to make sure, I echoed what they told me. They are, uh, support this decision that we've made. They're happy to be going back into school, and, um, yeah, let's leave it at that. Then my granddaughter said I can't use her name, but now that...
But we have her on tape.
Yep. But now that we are opening the schools back up, what's our current policy on facility use for the public?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's something that we're going to have to circle back around. I mean, that's not been a front burner issue at the moment because we just have too much to do to get school open for our own kids first. And, and once we get over the, you know, of that, then, then we have to start talking about what makes sense, under what circumstances, and who's, you know, like, what are the new? Because again, right, there has to be a new normal for that, right? We can't be closed to the public forever. These are community facilities, right? And so, we're going to have to figure that out, but we're going to have to just keep that on the back burner for right now because we just can't take on another task at the moment.
Thank you. I've heard the term opt-out. So if I'm a, if I'm a teacher, do we have some sort of authentication or validation of my request to opt-out of not coming to school to teach, right?
Yeah, so I think you were referring to the, one of the commentators earlier. I'm not sure what you mean by opt-out.
I would say, you know...
You know, what, a teacher or a student?
Teacher. So I'm a teacher, and I say, um, I have, um, a medical condition. I don't want to, I can't do face-to-face.
Yeah.
So how do we?
Right, so Tina's working with those, th, th, those are federal ADA rules, right? And that has to be medically documented, and, you know, it can't just be my opinion, my feeling. It has to be corroborated medically. And Tina has the list of who our employees are who already have that documentation. We have others in the process of attempting to acquire that documentation right now. And as we make staffing decisions starting tomorrow, those folks who have that documentation will get priority to move to being a virtual teacher. They can accept or not, you know, that, that offer. For the most part, I think the vast majority of them probably will. And we've got another group of people who, who don't and won't have that kind of documentation, but they might have a spouse at home who has an underlying health condition, and they're worried about taking it home to a vulnerable, you know, family member. And so, we've got a list of who those folks are. And, and that group of people will be the second priority list for us to, to start moving around and trying to protect those folks as much as we can. We're going to try to do as much as we can for as many as we can. You know, we're always about the greater good, whether that's our kids or whether that's our staff. That's, that's the complicated crossword puzzle that, you know, Scott and those principals are going to start working on tomorrow.
And just kind of a little follow-up on that. So I suppose it's possible that a teacher, do we have AP English?
Yes.
Okay. I never took it, so, but anyway.
Me neither.
Let's say, uh, the staff person that teaches AP English at Craig, I, I'm, this is completely hypothetical, I have no idea. They medically opt-out and go to the virtual school. Now, I, I assume Allison and Kim are all, and whoever does this staffing, are backfilling those types of classes with the appropriate licensed and capable person to teach that class.
Yeah. So the tricky one actually isn't AP, um, because you don't have to have a special credential. You need some skills, right? Right, Dan? But you don't need a special license or credential. Where we're going to run into a, a more interesting scenario is our dual enrollment classes. The new HLC requirements of folks having to have a master's degree in their content area or a master's degree in something else with 18 credits in the content area. We, we're still fortunately in a window where we have some flexibility yet. I think this is the last year of that because I think it got extended. And so hopefully, you know, because if, if we have the scenario you just described, somebody's got a, you know, a health condition, and they teach a dual enrollment class, and we might not have anybody else on staff who has that license, who has that, that HLC credential with a master's in that content area, then we would, you know, we're, we're working with Black Hawk right now, and we may or may not be able to offer that for dual credit. Kids are still going to get the class, but whether they're going to be able to get dual credit for or not, for it or not remains to be seen.
Thank you. One last question. Is our virtual school, is Arise starting before regular classroom start?
Our plan, if we can, if we can pull it off, and it's an if, is to have a, a week of summer school at Arise available to students who are interested. So again, it's not mandatory, it's optional, but would be a way for, uh, the kids that are in that environment to jumpstart for a week, if you will, and to have an opportunity to get their learning going and for our new staff to figure out, you know, their new roles and responsibilities. It, it has all kinds of advantages to it, again, if we can execute it because the timeline's really short. In terms of kids who have, you know, have the need to get learning and maybe even have some gaps that need to start getting closed, staff who are going to be new in many instances, teaching in that environment. And finally, it has some financial advantages to the extent that we have kids who take jumpstart Arise summer school. That will help us with our summer school count numbers, which ultimately affects our membership on our annual budget that Dan talked about earlier.
Thank you.
You guys ask really good questions.
Just one more, kind of reminded me, you mentioned charter schools. What about Rock River Charter School? Where's that going?
Yep, they're, they're full speed ahead. I actually just talked to Principal Peterson today. Their enrollment is basically all but full. And, you know, they're, they're putting programming in place that, again, follows the rules that we have and, and it flexibly programs for their kids. So yeah, thank you for asking.
Thank you Superintendent Poofall. I missed a July 14th meeting that this was discussed. Appreciate the information, appreciate the work behind it. And you sent me to the website. Actually, when I reviewed the meeting, it said, "Go to the website review." Great information. The one thing, and for me, um, not having all the answers is kind of fun and interesting. But much like, I can't remember, I think it was a parent or staff, the level of lack of information. So the, and, and I'll say it this way, not meaning to be harsh on this, but the level of intolerance to ambiguity causes a significant amount of anxiety.
Right.
So the questions that we know we don't have answers to? Let's go ahead and say, here are things we, we have in process and working that we don't have answers to. And, because much things we have answered, but we know as questions come up, we just, maybe we have a running document, things to be addressed. And even knowing that is a sense of comfort, knowing that, okay, they're working on that, and this is one more thing that's going to be coming. So just as a suggestion.
Thank you for that. We, we actually have that list, but we haven't published it. It exists.
Well, thank you again, um, along with Greg's last comment. I was on the website today, again, after talking to Michelle, and this is an odd request, but I would like us to consider stripping that site down a little and removing, like, 75% of what's on there. I don't know that we need to raise funds for certain things. So it directs people more clearly to FAQ, here's what you need to know, kind of things. Because there's, there's so much information that I think the emails we've received from people, uh, pretty much gave us their top 20 questions. And we need to have those answers or if they're, or if they're continuing. I appreciate Kathy's ability to put a safety message together that's meaningful and, and sharing that with us. This whole board backs the administration. So those that see inconsistency in the schools, they need to talk to their principal. They're, they don't get what they need, they need to talk to Scott and Steve because there's no room for inconsistency here in messaging. This board is very consistent, is what we're expecting as it relates to people respecting other people's space. And the good news is with the schools that we have, social distancing will not be an issue based on your new numbers. What people don't know in the column that isn't on here, and you don't need to go back and do this, although Dan might have time now, but, um, kidding Dan, but, uh, the column about maximum capacity.
Oh, yeah.
Those that have been around here a long time.
We have room.
Remember when we put the additions on? Adams and Washington, and we added, we used to have portable classrooms, we had all those things. So what people don't know is we have adequate space in all of our schools to socially distance all of our children, meeting the guidelines, based on the new numbers we have. So I really like that. I could bore you because I started doing calculations, but trust me when I tell you, and Greg knows that we have enough space here to serve these kids. So while most people, some people who sent us letters said enough, this couldn't be done, I believe it can be done if people are respectful and, as many members said, if our community helps us by encouraging their kids, training their kids, working with them, on, you know, respecting other people's space, and, um, I think it will move forward. And it's going to be a wild couple of weeks, but we do appreciate the staff and all the efforts that went into this. So thank you.
All right. Next up is Mr. Garner, talking about Big Ten athletics. Well, you have to talk about football because Superintendent Poofall didn't, so...
Right, well, what a nice transition that, uh, we planned this, I think, right? That Steve used, uh, sports as an analogy for this next topic. But luckily, on July 14th, you as the board members, uh, board had the foresight insight to approve fall athletics, whatever form that took, whether that took place in the fall. And I remember distinctly saying it could, it could take place in the spring. And we are seeing an increased trend for fall athletics to be moved to the spring. So, uh, don't be surprised if you see that happen, uh, as we don't have anyone to compete with, basically. Uh, big, uh, I'm sorry, the Badger Conference, uh, Big Eight, all of the Dane County schools have postponed. So chances are, we will as well. We want to provide our students with the greatest experience possible. And if that means we have to move fall to spring, then that's what we'll do, um, based on those things. We are, of course, we always want to be prudent, and so, we are awaiting two, the results of two meetings. Uh, the Department of Health Services, the State Health Services are, are coming out with some recommendations, as well as the WI Board of Controls. They're coming out, I believe, August 14th is when they're meeting to release what that spring season might look like for, uh, for us. So, uh, that's all I know at this point. You, you say, you know, don't answer questions that we don't know. I don't know what the results of that will, but, will be, but I can tell you, at this point, it's our inclination that we'll probably move fall sports to the spring. We have run successful summer camps, uh, skill and drill camps at the high schools. We did, we did cancel, um, middle school season one based on lack of competition, but as you saw in my email to you, and you reviewed this document, informed you that coaches do, uh, at the middle school will have the opportunity to run small, pod-like skill and drill camps if they so choose for an hourly rate. It's much like what we've seen at the high school. And as Superintendent Poofall stated early, we've had cases, we've had an outbreak here or there, but it is, it is not spread, and we have closed it down, and we've taken the necessary protocols to ensure that students and, uh, staff are safe, and we run those successfully. So that's my update for you. Do you have questions?
Thank you. I'm trying to find that email. Can you just, so are we talking about all fall sports?
Yes.
That would be...
I did confirm it is, it's not just the high-risk, it's all fall sports. So if we move that season, it would be golf, tennis, you name it, whatever's in the fall would go to the spring.
And so, is this a, a board's? You have to get board's approval for this? We'll be at the next meeting? But we, I guess, what I'm looking for is I'd like to make, be able to make a decision one way or the other very soon.
Sure. Well, and we would, you can provide me with your input right now. The, the issue, July 14th, you actually gave me permission to run fall sports, and the caveat that I, I did put in my presentation was if it happens in fall, yes, great. It may happen in spring, but you're giving the permission to run fall sports when that occurs. So unless someone thinks we need a different vote?
I, I guess, um, what I'm asking for is a decision to be made sooner than later.
Sure. We'll know this week. Once, uh, once we have WIA come out with the information, again, I can tell you almost certainly, but not, I don't want to say 100%, that we'll probably move fall sports to the spring as much of our conferences around us and our competitors, Milton, just last night, approved to move to spring, so...
So I guess I, I got to ask. So unlike this spring, where we brought back to the administration to approve 50% for the coaches, however, now, are we sticking to the policy that says if we don't have a sport offering, coaches won't be paid?
That's what we've stuck to, uh, based on the contract, is for the middle school season one. But if the fall season is moved to spring, they would get paid for their fall coaching in the spring, if that makes sense.
If we have.
If we have.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? That's a very good question. My answer to that would be that we'll discuss this in two weeks when we have another meeting, once we have the outcome. I'm certain that coaches could put on workshops.
Yes.
It would be some better than others, like everything else. But when we talk about completely deviating our path, we want to be very clear as to what the expectations are for that path. So if we're going to do workshops in place of, where does that money clearly come from? While it's in the budget or not in the budget? We, it just would be good for us to have a very clear picture, and I'm not trying to create work for you, but on the 25th, this week, WIA is going to pull a plug on all of this. We, everybody expects that, so what is our next step? Because I think the coaches, the athletes, the parents, and the community want to know, so what does that mean?
Sure.
How can you run workshops? You know, how does that work? And I, I'm familiar with how it works, with the 1 to 10 ratio and all of that, but we just want to be very transparent.
Yeah, well, and, and I'm sure you know that we can't run practices, that type of thing now if we're going to do the spring sports.
Correct.
The skill and drill camps are a way to avoid that kind of conflict. But we'll have more, I certainly can come back and give you an update.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think it's just smart for us to be in, upfront with that because people are already asking.
Sure.
I believe it was Tom Miller had an article in the Gazette that was intelligent and articulate about how you could put cross-country together with track, et cetera, et cetera. And it was just ideas he had, but not that we're going to create that, but I think that it, some of those things have merit, so...
Okay.
And finally, this is off-topic, so double yell at me later, but...
Oh, boy.
Interns, are we able to hire interns as Arise teachers? I forgot that when I was talking. Because I understand that the university is using internship as a way to train people in virtual modes. I don't know if we've reached out to the universities to bring people in for paid internships rather than...
I don't know if we've reached out to the universities to bring people in for paid internships rather than student teaching.
We've done that before, not, not virtually, but we've done that at our elementary schools. So yeah, we, we haven't specifically reached out to the universities yet, but we do have a posting out there for AVA.
Okay. And I, I do, I do recall, but that doesn't necessarily mean, we talked about it here, I could have dreamt this at 3:00 AM. But that we gave you the latitude to add additional staff because we know we may need additional staff beyond the staffing plan.
Yes.
I believe we gave you that permission in July. So you have that.
Thank you.
You know, we, we just need to move forward with filling those spaces. And interns are pretty awesome.
Yeah.
They're certainly better on technology than I am.
We've had good, successful them.
Yes.
We really, we really have.
All right. Other questions for Scott? All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yes, I have two future meeting dates for you. The next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for August 25th here at the ESC, starting at 6:00 PM. And the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee is scheduled to meet on September 29th at the ESC, starting at 4:30.
All right. Finance is not scheduled? Okay. We are at the end of our agenda. We adjourned.